And I will be calling to order the joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority for October 19, 2021 at precisely 2:09. And of course, we are continuing with the City Council as well as Boarding Commission meetings to be closed to the public for in-person attendance. Public is encouraged to watch and participate from the safety of their homes and to practice social distancing. Meetings are broadcast live on Glendale TV, viewable on Spectrum Cable, Channel 6, and AT&amp;T Universe, Channel 99. Meetings are also streamed live in high definition on the city's webpage, glendaleca.gov/live, on youtube.com/myglendale, and on Apple TV, Roku, and Amazon devices using a free app called Screenwing and choosing Glendale TV from the menu. For public comments and questions during this meeting, again, you may call 818-9-7-8100. Public comments on a specific agenda item will be taken when the agenda item is discussed. And with that, roll call for council, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Kosakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
And Agujanian?
Present.
And we have roll call for the Housing Authority.
Authority member Agujanian?
Present.
Brotman?
Here.
Kosakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Perazian?
Here.
And Cherkosakian. I'm sorry about this. It looks like we had the roll call mixed up. It would be Cherkosakian and Council Authority member Devine.
We're all here.
And Aginian. And Aginian.
Aginian's here. He's pronounced by listening.
That's why I was waiting. I didn't know if you called Aginian or Agujanian.
Thank you. So can we have your report, please?
The agenda for the Tuesday, October 19, 2021, joint public meeting of the City Council and Housing Authority was posted on October 13, 2021, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And what's the next item?
Community development regarding program update and future consideration for monthly housing subsidy program. A council motion providing direction regarding the renewal or expiration of the MHSP and selecting an alternative for further evaluation implementation as necessary.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of City Council, Cherkosakian, members of Housing Authority. This afternoon, we're presenting to you an update report on the monthly housing subsidy program that per council's direction and the Housing Authority's direction, we established it in 2019, two years ago. Our housing staff has done a remarkable job of processing 1,000 applications and being able to approve over 900 of these applicants. The two-year had a sunset date, and the first set of applicants who received this $300 monthly subsidy program is coming up expiration of March of next year. So we are here to request direction on the council's desire to whether extend the program, have it expired like originally intended, or modify it with some new criteria, if you wish. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Peter Zovak, our Assistant Community Development Director, to present the item.
Good afternoon, Madam Devine, Cherkosakian, members of the City Council and Housing Authority. This report serves two purposes. It provides an update on the monthly housing subsidy program in terms of how it is going, and it seeks direction from the council on any future considerations of the monthly housing subsidy program or something in place of it moving forward. And I'll take you through the PowerPoint presentation here. The monthly housing subsidy program was first established in October 2019. It was the first of three new subsidy programs that the City Council established utilizing Measure S funding. If you recall, the other two subsidy programs that were established were the Life Wrap and Lice Wrap programs. Those were both established a year later, in October of 2020. Because the MHSP program was established in October 2019, it was under a different city council, meaning that it was prior to Cherkosakian and Councilmember Brotman coming on board. Oh, and the reason we are here seeking council direction on this is because there's an important milestone that is coming up. In March of 2022, we will have the first set of applicants who began receiving assistance reach their two-year timeline for having received assistance, and as a result, the assistance expires after two years. And so staff is seeking City Council direction as to whether or not there's a desire to extend the duration of the current program. Extend the current program and maybe add additional new applicants into it. Extend the current program with existing applicants and add new applicants that have new criteria. Extend the current program and establish a brand-new program with criteria. Allow the program to expire as originally designed or some other alternative that City Council could choose. Shortly after the March/October 2019 approval, staff began the marketing and outreach of the MHSP. From November 4, 2019 to November 18, we had an application period of marketing of the application period. Flyers were sent to the Section 8 waiting list, Glendale Affordable Housing Interest List, organizations working with seniors, social media, and television programs. And you know what? Let me scoot back to PowerPoint 2, because I did neglect to mention what the criteria that was established by the City Council for MHSP. Let me just do that right now. So the desire was to assist 1,000 households, 1,000 applicants in the program. The program provides a $300 a month subsidy. It was an overall budget of $8.4 million that was targeted for this program. It serves lower-income households who are seniors. They must be Glendale residents who are renters, and they must be disabled. And priority in the senior category, priority was provided to households where a member of the household was 75 or older. Otherwise, any household that's over 62 could apply for the program. So minimum 62, priority for those 75 and over.
May I ask a question?
Councilmember Brotman?
Yeah, just to clarify, did you say disabled and low income or disabled or low income?
All of the criteria. So disabled, yes.
Got it. Thank you.
So as I said, the marketing started on November 4 to the 18. We cast a wide net for the marketing of the program, and then the actual application period began on November 18 and lasted to December 12. It was in-person registration for the program. It was done here at City Hall in the Perkins Room. If you recall, staff, or some of you may recall, that staff have developed at that time a specific software program to use for the application signup system, in which we used California driver's license or ID cards to sign, quickly sign applicants up into the program. At the time, we had over 50 employees that worked that roughly three-week period, and the application period was open Monday through Saturdays. We used GYA students, we had volunteers, we had regular staff, not only of the Housing Division, but also of other, members of other divisions in the Community Development Department, and also some employees outside of the department from other departments that worked on this program. And at this point, I should recognize that this was all done under the leadership of Cipan Zadorian, who is administering the monthly housing subsidy program from the very onset, and he's here to answer any questions that I might have to defer to him on. At the time, after the application period closed, we had 2,700 applicants for the program. As a result of being oversubscribed, and as we anticipated, a lottery was necessary. We did conduct that lottery. It was conducted on January 24. The lottery lasted six hours, and that was because we were selecting 1,750 applicants from that pool of 2,700 that applied. We needed to make sure we had enough to qualify 1,000 people, knowing that people will not qualify for all of the criteria and meet all the criteria. So we wanted to make sure we had a healthy reserve to draw from. The lottery was open to the public. It took place in the planning hearing room. It was aired on GTV6. And there were two lotteries that took place. Remember, we had priority for households in which a member might be over 75 years old. Those were the priority applicants. And then we had every other household as a non-priority that was, as long as they were senior. We had 1,229 priority applicants. We had 521 non-priority applicants. After the lottery, we started planning for the interviews of the applicants beginning in February of 2020. We had made appointments for nearly, for the first nearly 200 people to come in to City Hall to begin their qualification process. We were asking them to come in and complete forms that we had for them, and provide documents such as bank statements, income verification, lease agreements, ID, social security information, utility bills, all the information necessary to qualify them. Shortly after mailing out those, the appointment dates, COVID hit, and we had the shutdown, stay-at-home orders. So all in-person appointments were canceled and had to be rescheduled, conducted over the telephone. Applicants were then mailed the information that we needed from them and the additional application pages we needed from them to be filled out. To speed up the process, we included self-addressed stamped envelopes to send that information back to us. So we did have delays. We did not have access to City Hall. We had, the applicants themselves had some delays as well on their side. They had limited access to some of the institutions they needed to get us the paperwork back. Those that needed to get their banking statements from the banks, those were impacted. Social Security Administration offices were certainly impacted. It went to an online phone-in basis, and so this extended out the period to qualify people. The other things that extended out the period to qualify people were that sometimes we received forms back that were incomplete, and then documents had to go back and forth via mail to get those completed. And then, on top of that, we were dealing with a population that weren't necessarily technology-driven, and so nearly all of our senior applicants did not have email access to make that process work faster. So then we began the application review and approval process. And so to date, we have 933 applicants that have been approved for the program and have been receiving assistance. And just to show you some of the criteria, that's out of the first 1,000 that we qualified, that's 608 that were approved for that process of the first 1,000, meaning then 325 from that first 1,000. I'm sorry, let me take that back. I jumped ahead. 933 have been approved, 608 were approved that were enlisted in the first 1,000 that we interviewed. 325 approvals come from the waiting list that we dipped into after the first 1,000. We've had 678 households disqualified, and that represents 390 from the first 1,000 interviewed and 288 from the waiting list. We currently have 54 applicants pending. We have 13 scheduled for interviews, and then we'll be scheduling a few more to round out to that 1,000 qualified. We expect to reach that either sometime in late this month or certainly by November to be able to reach our full 1,000 enrollment. As we explained back in 2019, the enrollment process is not immediate, because you have to go through the application process, qualifying. Some people are faster than others. Certainly, the delay with COVID-19 happening. You are enlisting and enrolling people over time. You don't enroll 1,000 households on day one. And so what you see is kind of a bell-shaped curve. You start to have enrolled people, those numbers get higher every month, you reach your 1,000, and then some of those 1,000 are already achieving the end of their two-year program, and you start to decline on the backside. And that's what you certainly see in this program.
May I ask a question, Madam Mayor?
Brotman?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So you say originally there were 2,700 applicants when the program was first launched, before you did the lottery.
Correct.
Right. And you approved, and you know, anyway, I have these numbers, 933 approved and 54 pending. So I guess what I'm wondering is, out of that original 2,700, are there a large number that would qualify, but their applications have not been reviewed, maybe because they didn't make it through the lottery? I guess I'm trying to understand, what's the untapped or unaddressed demand of people that would qualify, but we have not either gone through their application or, I don't know what else it would be, or something else?
I would say that, to answer your question, I would say that, let me just clarify, that we took and received 2,700 applications. We did not screen and process 2,700. We did pre-screening at the application intake process, but we did not formally do a screening of them. So of the 2,700, all were placed in the lottery basket and 1750 were pulled.
Okay.
So I can only speak to the fact that we are slowly looking like we will approach our possibly interviewing all 1750 that were selected in the lottery. That remaining 1,000 people, we have no information on, don't know whether or not they would qualify or not.
Okay.
And never will, if we're able to achieve the 1,000 enrollment using the 1,750 people that we've pulled.
Okay. So we have 950 people that applied, and we've just never, because they weren't selected through the lottery, we've never evaluated whether they would qualify or not. So there is another pool out there, and we still have, we still have their names. There's another potential, another potential pool of candidates.
You have another potential pool of applicants that were not selected in the lottery process that could be utilized possibly for some future program, yes. But you also have two years that have gone by of other people that didn't have the ability to apply for that program two years ago. It's kind of the argument that we hear about the Section 8 waiting list program. The program still has some 2,000 households on the waiting list, but that waiting list was established back in 2001.
Right.
And so while we say we're still waiting to serve those on the waiting list, it's a long time has passed that others needing the assistance can't get on the waiting list.
Right. Okay. But essentially, out of the 1,750 that we selected through the lottery, roughly speaking, 1,000, no, a little more than 1,000 ended up needing our conditions, meeting the criteria.
It looks like it, yes. It looks like we'll be able to stay within the 1,750 selected in the lottery and be able to qualify 1,000 households.
Okay.
There'd be, being this close to 1,000, we're at 933 with 54 pending, and then certainly a few, I think it's another 250 that are still on that list. I think we could achieve the 1,000 within the 1,750.
Okay.
And not have to look at what to do with, to get more applicants for it.
Right. Okay. Got it. Thank you.
So in terms of caseload, from March of 2020 to October of 2021, it really averages over to 81 applicants that are processed each month. That's 47 that are processed and approved, 34 disqualified each month. It's kind of an unfair timeline in that in March 2020, we were still beginning the program. So the real work in qualifying people really didn't take place until April and May, until information was mailed back to us to start approving them. And so in comparison to Section 8 and their operations, the 81 number of processed per month was deemed to be a very good number. And that's a result of a lot of hard work by staff. As I mentioned earlier, not everyone qualified for the program. There are those that did not qualify for the program, and various reasons as to why. And this chart here, and I understand that there were two charts that were provided in your staff report, but the labeling in the transition into the AMS system was lost. It is present here in your PowerPoints. And so this takes you through some of the reasons why applicants were disqualified, and just some of the highlights. 163 households that were processed had property owned, lived in property that was owned by a family member, and the council at that time had stated that that was a disqualifying factor for the program. 140 households had household members that were under 62, and they were not senior. There were 114 household members that staff was unable to contact. Staff made multiple attempts, phone calls, letters, everything they can do, search of utility bills to be able to contact them. We could not contact them. We kept their places open in case they were able to contact us later on. They never did, and as a result, there were 114 that we could not contact for various reasons. We assume that they moved. Unfortunately, people have passed away as well from the program. 106 people withdrew from the program. We found that a lot of applicants began to withdraw from the program when we began asking for the supporting documentation to be able to meet the criteria, so we don't really know if they were really able to qualify and withdrew for those reasons. 61 households actually lived outside, participants lived outside of Glendale. There were 44 households that were already receiving Section 8 or living in an affordable housing project, or had been enrolled into the Section 8 program, or had moved into affordable housing project by the time we called them. And so that was the good reasons for disqualification. 17 were over income, 11 had passed away, insufficient paperwork being provided by 10 households. We found out five households owned residential property. And again, that was an exclusion to the program for them. Four had moved into nursing homes. Couple households individually applied, and so they were removed. And then one household started an inspection. We had stated to City Council, City Council at that time was interested in doing some type of survey of the participants in the program as they move along into it. And we've been able to do that, and our focus has been on enrolling applicants. Now that we have our first group of people approaching their first year of completion in the program, we started to survey them on a rolling basis, monthly. So this survey that we're going to be providing to you some information on in this PowerPoint is based on 170 households that have been surveyed thus far. And granted, that's a small number relative to the 1,000 we will be enrolling into the program, and it's just a sample, and a beginning sample of what some of the results are. Although with this population of being senior, being very stationary, 65, 62 and older, most at 75 and older, we don't think this will change much moving forward. It'll be interesting to see if it does. But of those people surveyed, 33% of the households were very satisfied with this program. 67% of the households were satisfied. They were asked additional questions and thoughts about the assistance being received. 100% of the households reported feeling more comfortable financially receiving the $300 monthly assistance. 85% of the households reported an improvement in their physical health that they attribute to receiving the additional assistance. And 13% of the households stated that the subsidy allowed them to save more money for We also asked the number of applicants, how many were receiving family support both before and after enrollment in the MSHP? And granted, this, again, this is based on 170 respondents so far. 24% of the households stated that before MHSP, they were receiving subsidy assistance from families. After starting the MHSP program, that number decreased to 13% of households. And then we asked the question of what they spent their subsidy on, what the housing subsidy. 94% of respondents stated that they spent the money on their rent. Of that, 59% stated that it was solely on rent, whereas for the others, it was a mixture of rent and bills, 38%, food at 34%, healthcare costs at 4%, and one person mentioned entertainment.
Going out Americana.
And it was related to a visit to the Americana, when we investigated that, that 1% response. So as intended, the program is being used to subsidize and supplement their housing costs, whether it be for rent, food, bills, healthcare, things like that. And then just a reminder, it was a total $8.4 million budget when it was set up, $7.2 million in direct assistance, just nearly $900,000 in staffing over the life of the program, and $240,000 in program costs. Actual expenditures to date are about approximately $2.9 million, with $2.2 million in subsidy going out, $520,000 being spent on staffing to date, and $121,000 in program costs. And given the fact that we do have our first set of applicants starting to achieve their two-year timeline, deadline for assistance, we did wanted to check back in with the City Council. We did want to provide an update on how things have been going so far, and then do get an idea as to whether or not there are any other considerations the council might want to have moving forward with the monthly housing subsidy program. And the alternatives, there are six alternatives, and again, they range from renewing the program for current participants and extending the duration of the program for this 1,000 to some to-be-determined date. No new participants will be considered. Alternative 2 is to renew the program for the existing current participants and allow new participants meeting the same criteria to be accepted into the program. Alternative 3 is renewing the MHSP current participant program and allowing for new participants to be accepted into the program with a different eligibility criteria for those new participants, in some examples, working families, special need households, things like that. Alternative 4 is to allow the current MHSP program to expire and establish a new program with new eligibility criteria. And alternative 5 is to terminate the MHSP program after all budgeted subsidy has been exhausted, no new applicants. And that was the original intent of the program when it was set up, is a two-year program. And then alternative 6 is any other consideration alternatives not proposed by staff. And with that, that concludes the presentation, and both myself and Mr. Zadorian is here. If there are any questions. I should say that if there is a desire to take no further action to let the MHSP program end as intended, we will be going back to households. We've gone through a process in qualifying them and making sure that they understood and signed documentation stating that they understood it was a two-year program. If it was the decision of the council to keep it at this two-year program, then let it expire at termination, we will then be reminding those on the program of this upcoming termination. We feel that between now and March of 2022 is enough time to remind them on that and let them and have them prepare for exiting the program.
Madam?
I have a question.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Zovak. Well, all I can say is that according to the surveys that you've done, this has been a very successful program, and the recipients are certainly appreciative. And it was a really good use of Measure S funding. And I want to thank staff for the good job that they did over these last couple of years to make this program, to facilitate the program, and to get it up and running. And so with that, I will hear from my colleagues and if they have questions or comments to be made.
I have a comment. Madam?
Okay. Councilmember Agujanian?
Yes, I would like, oh, I got this off. I mean, this program, I think, helped those who I met, they said it helped them. And I would like to go with alternative 3. And what I need to say is, basically, we have reviewed and touched 1,611 people. 933 at the time when they were reviewing, being recipient of the $300, and 678 people, they were disqualified. So total is 1,611 families. We had like 2,700 who they applied, and as, as we said a little bit earlier, so they were left out, something 1229 priority applicants we have, and 521 non-priority applicants. So I'm looking at, and the total was 2,700. Apparently, there is 1,089 people in the pipe that they have not been reviewed. Some of them, they have not been reviewed, or they have not been interviewed, not reviewed, but interviewed. So out of the way it goes, out of 1,089 people, I am assuming there are 600 more people who can be eligible for this, at least, out of that 1,089. So I would like to extend the pro- Some of them, they have not been reviewed, or they have not been interviewed, not reviewed, but interviewed. So out of the way it goes, out of 1,089 people, I am assuming there are 600 more people who can be eligible for this, at least, out of that 1,089. So I would like to extend the program for one year and add those, the balance of those who were in the list, or at least those who are over 75 years old, to be considered for this program. To extend those who are already getting for another year, and all those who are over 75 years old to be included in the program.
So Ms. Agger Janian, I think the alternative that you're looking for then is alternative two, which would be use the same criteria. I think in the 1,589 priority, we were able to serve everybody 75 and older because they were in, they were in that first lottery. We may have other people, though, that were 74 that are now 75. And I think, I defer to Mr. Zovak, but I think what we'd like to do, if that's your, the council and housing authorities' direction, we'd like to then go out again and say, reapply, as opposed to just look at those 1,089 people.
Yeah. And but to those who are receiving, to get another year.
They would give, if that's what you want.
I don't want the staff to go through and review again and again. I mean, those who had received it, so to continue and add a new, if 75 is all exhausted, maybe we go to 72 and over, or 74 and over, wherever that we can help the public, that will be great, in my opinion. That's my alternative. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Agger Janian, next. Who would like to go next?
You want to go? Okay. Oh.
Mr. Janian.
Yes, I'd just like to ask Mr. Zovak, of the 678 disqualified out of the 1,665, how many persons were notified that they are disqualified?
Oh, they all were. Staff worked with them on the qualification process. So if someone was disqualified, they were informed either in person, in writing, on telephone. They had the ability to appeal the decision as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Brotman.
Yeah. First, a question. So the 933 that were approved that have been in the program, receiving their $300 a month, have we gone back? I mean, other than doing the survey, do we, do we go back and see whether they still qualify or no?
We do, we do go back, and we have them go through a, after a year, come back to us, and we go through a re.
Like a recertification or something?
Yes, yes. And then we make sure that they're still living in Glendale, that they're still out there alive and receiving assistance, yes.
Yeah. And have many fallen off from that process?
We've had a number of people fall off the process because of passing away, and it's just with the clientele that we're dealing with. Remember, we, the priority were applicants that were 75 and older during COVID times as well. We do have a number of people that have violated the program rules, and we've stopped the subsidy and are seeking repayment of it. Some have moved out of the city completely without notifying, and we've caught them. And so we do ongoing monitoring for fraud, and then we also revisit the files on an annual basis as well.
Okay. So if we did extend it, we would, that was, my question was, you know, if we extend it, we would want to make sure all the current, current participants are eligible.
Correct.
Going forward. So we would do that. We would run through them all and just make sure that conditions haven't changed and they're eligible for the extension.
Right. So in addition to staff doing the qualification process of new applicants, they're going back to those applicants that are approaching their one year on the assistance on a monthly rolling basis and recertifying them and re-upping them for the second year.
Okay, okay. So, so if we were to extend, we would, you know, we would need new budget for that if we were to then increase the number that's, that are eligible. And I think that's what Councilmember Agger Janian is talking about, is going from 1,000 to some larger number, right? So then we would need to pull more money, I guess, out of our, maybe next year's Measure S budget, I don't, well, it would be March. So, yeah, I would, I am in principle, you know, in support of doing that, extending with the current population that we have, as long as they're still eligible, and then going back to maybe some of the applicants that didn't make it through the lottery, and maybe some, you know, if we go out for another call for applicants, we'll get a lot more and, and maybe extend it. I don't know what the right number is to extend it to. So maybe it'll take your advice as far as how, what sense do you have in terms of how much of that specific population, that kind of elderly and disabled, you know, low-income population, we have, we have addressed, you know? Have we just addressed, you know, a small percentage? But it sounds like maybe not. Maybe we have addressed a good, a good chunk, given that we've gone through, you know, 200, 2,700 applicants initially, and we've, you know, done a pretty substantial number of those.
Correct. So if there is a desire to continue the program in some form, other than just letting it expire as originally intended, we would be coming back to you with more information as to how that might look than depending upon the council direction. So any, any discussions today, we wouldn't go back out and start a brand-new program. We would be coming back with some maybe policy questions. As stated earlier, there, we did pull 1750 in a lottery. We don't think we will go all the way to 1750 to qualify for the 1,000. So if there's a desire to extend the program, is it only extending it out to that 1750 originally pulled in the first lottery? If there's a desire to extend it out even further, then do you go to the remaining 1,000 people that applied but were not selected in the lottery? Or do you go through the process of opening up an application period again, brand-new, and kind of start this process over again to give everyone an opportunity to reapply? And so there are some, some policy discussions depending upon the initial direction we get today that we would then be coming back to you on.
Okay.
Which is another reason why we wanted to get this, even though it's not until March 2022.
Right.
We needed to get as soon as possible some direction so we can start the planning process.
Okay. So I, you know, I'm in agreement with Mayor Devine. I think it's a good program. It's been a good program. And I'm also in agreement that, you know, staff has really put in a lot of work to make sure that this is an effective program, and that there's, you know, watching out for potential fraud, but, you know, making sure that, that it gets rolled out in a timely way. So this is great, and yeah, I support us moving forward and expanding it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Brotman. Who would like to go next? Mr. Councilmember Najarian or Kasakian?
I can go next, unless Councilmember Najarian would like to.
Go ahead, Councilmember Kasakian.
Thank you. So one of the questions is, I know, well, first of all, I want to congratulate you, Mr. Zovak, and staff, doing a yeoman's task during a very difficult time. I know COVID and the restrictions did not make this easy. Given that this program was being rolled out during COVID, and there was other forms of assistance that was being given by either the state or the federal government, do we have, in order to have a better understanding of the full efficacy of our program, do we know how many of the recipients of our assistance, the city's assistance, were also receiving any other type of assistance from either the state or from some other agency during the pandemic?
That we don't know, but it's such an early process in the survey that we can certainly, moving forward, gather that information. It was not part of the original survey question process. At the time of application, and much through the early part of COVID, those programs, federal, state programs, weren't set up yet. It would be an interesting exercise to determine how many of those applicants did take advantage of any COVID relief programs that were out there.
That would be something that I would like to know about, and I don't know if my colleagues would also like to have that information. I think it'll give us a more realistic picture as, in terms of the need. I know that when the program was initially thought of, it was partially because we were seeing individuals who were highly stressed in terms of their ability to pay rents and what they were receiving in terms of assistance, in terms of supplemental security income or other sources of income, was not closing that gap. And this was seen as a way of helping at least minimize the size of that gap. The other question I have is, I know that the survey was done, so I'm glad for that, but, you know, I would have no doubt that individuals receiving funds that they weren't otherwise expecting to would be satisfied or very satisfied with the program. The question I have is, in order to be able to understand what we could possibly do better to serve a very vulnerable segment of the community, what are we planning on doing to ask, or have we asked, what are the areas where the participants felt the program could use improvement, or how we could change the way we're providing this service?
There is a question on the survey. Most indicated that a higher subsidy would be the best way to make the program better. Some suggested $400, $500. That tended to be the typical go-to answer on a question like that. And again, it's, it's a very defined population that this program serves. And now that I think about it, going back to the issue of COVID-19, I would venture to say that of all the groups that were impacted by COVID-19 financially, those receiving, those seniors receiving Social Security were pretty much immune on a financial side of COVID-19 impact versus young families, losing work, reduced hours, and things like that. So going back to your original first question about how many took advantage of COVID-19, it'd be interesting to see that, only because they were on such a fixed income program that really had no impact by the pandemic to begin with.
I think, Mr. Kasakian, I think also some of the questions that we did ask about ability.
We need microphone.
I'm sorry. Some of the questions that we did ask about their ability to save for the future goes hand-in-hand with that. We, we would like a higher subsidy. It might allow them to put some away. We saw that they were dropping in help from their family. So you may assume, I think you could make the assumption, that they were just getting by. If they had a higher subsidy, it would allow them to put more away in savings for that emergency.
Sure.
Especially once the subsidy goes away. But we'll, we'll focus on those questions as well.
You know, the more information we have and the more data that we have, I think the better we can chisel around the edges and come up with a program that could truly be effective in addressing some of the needs of a very vulnerable population. Individuals who, as Mr. Zovak, you pointed out, are seniors and whose income is capped, who are unable to find additional work to supplement whatever increasing expenses, you know, there's now some talk of there potentially being inflation coming as well, and anyone who's been to the, through the grocery aisle can tell you that the prices of everything is going up, and whether it's supply chain issues or whatever, time will only tell. My, my main concern with this is that, obviously, I think it's probably not lost on anyone that this resembles some sort of universal basic income program, which I don't necessarily object to, but the question becomes, what is our end goal? How do we then continue? If we had initially planned for this program to be for two years, it's somewhat unfair to say that we've done it, you know, now the time is up, even though they, they're aware of it and say, you have to figure it out for yourself. If there was some sort of program to go hand-in-hand with that, to be able to figure out what happens when the city is unable to provide these funds, I don't know how we do that, but I would have more comfort in continuing to support this. Because the reality of it is, with the outlay of expenses that we have, there's a lot of things that we're going to have to discuss and figure out where we want to spend our funds as a city council. A number of departments that have needs that we've deferred for a number of years, we've had conversations here about the quality of our roads and sidewalks and sewer lines and mains. So, you know, to make this commitment and have it be indefinite, I don't know how I, at this moment, I don't support that, but I would certainly at least, given the fact that we've all come through some very severe economic times, and everyone has struggled, and everyone in various capacities has tried to shoulder the burden by helping neighbors and families, I would be for extending this for a temporary period. But I would like us to also have a discussion about how we clearly sunset this, or what we do for those individuals when we're unable to provide for them, or at least have it be phased out.
And I should say that that was a concern of the council at that time in approving the program then, was, is it really going to be a two-year program? Will there be pressure to extend it? So many things have happened since two years ago, as you indicated, with COVID-19 and some of the other things. So it is one of the reasons why we did bring this item back.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Najarian, and then Ms. Parazzi.
Thank you, Mayor. So when this came to council two years ago, I was a strong proponent of it. However, I was very concerned that this would turn into a social welfare entitlement program. This was not designed to be a universal basic income. This was designed to help the most needy in our community, to help as many of the most needy in our community with a sum that would perhaps tie them over and help them make that rent. Since then, there's a lot of things that have happened. Many people have not paid rent for a year or more. Many of those rent, many of the rent that has been owned has been paid by the state and by other sources. So our premise, our initial, one of our initial premises has sort of been put on its, on its end. We put the two-year stat, the two-year sunset in there because we did not want, council at that point, did not want to extend this and to extend this, because there would be significant budget constraints, significant pressure to expand the number, significant pressure to expand the amount of the subsidy, and it would just get out of control. And I'm, perhaps, my fears are, are coming to light at this point. But I want to go back to the very basic point that caused me to support this, and that's to help as many of the most needy in our community as possible. We've spent 2.2 million or 2.5 million out of a budgeted 8.4. So that means we've got another, what, 5 million perhaps plus in there? I, I don't want to continue paying someone who's had two years of this subsidy and leave someone who would otherwise qualify out in the cold. So I think those that have come in and they've done their two years to rotate out of the program and to extend the subsidy to those who are qualified, who did apply, and who are waiting for something, to get something until the funding goes out. And it might, you know, if you look at that, and can extrapolate how the funds are being spent, it might just work perfectly for taking in all those other qualified folks who didn't win the initial lottery but who did apply, and to give them their share of the two-year subsidy. Adding more money to this at this point is, this is not the right time to do it. This should be done in the budget process. There are other pressures on Measure S and other, as you mentioned, other departments have funding needs. It would be wrong just to say we're going to dump some money into this now. But let's go through with our original plan, let those who were there for the two years cycle out, and open it up to those 1,000 or more that have been waiting patiently, who are qualified, and let them get their subsidy. And then at the end of that, then we need to take a look at it and see where we want to go. So that would be option five, maybe. I'm not sure if I, if I'm reading the nuances in those properly, but continue with the program until the money is, is out. Continuing means those who finished their two years rotate out, and we offer subsidy to the rest on the waiting list and after the waiting list, then to those who did not win the lottery but who did apply.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Najarian. Ms. Parazzi.
Yes, I wanted to first thank you, the staff, for this, just, their offer and the job they're doing. And I believe this is, this was a successful program, and I, I believe we need to. And I believe this is, this was a successful program, and I, I believe we need to continue the program, keep those people, how many they are, and just include more people and needy people, and continue the program. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Agajanian, did you want to weigh in on this? I know you had a question before, but maybe you'd like to weigh in.
My concern was basically about the disqualified people, you know, if they were notified or not. And that's good. I like the way Mr. Zovak answered them. And it is a good program. We need a program like this. And just like Mr. Najarian said, we have to look at our options and see what's ahead. But I'd say it's a go for me. I'd say it's a go.
To extend it?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, well, we seem to have some varied opinions on how we should do this, but most of us, I think, agree to extend it. I have, I have a question. Is Councilmember Najarian right that we have spent 2.5 million of the funding and we have a little over 5 million remaining?
It's, it is correct, but I think I should explain, we have an $8.4 million budget. And within that $8.4 million budget, we've estimated about $7.6 million needed to provide 1,000 households 24 months' worth of assistance. We've only, because we've been signing up people over time and approving them and paying their subsidy, we have not incurred more right now than $2.2 million in expenses on the subsidy side. But we intend to reach that 7.6 once we have all 1,000 people on in the program. So, there's no savings in the program. You can't necessarily say 8.4 originally requested and budgeted, we've only spent 2.2. The rest of that money, the rest of that 8.4, is committed to future subsidies for the 1,000 applicants.
Okay, so, so then my question is, then, in the future discussion, we'll be talking about how much we would add to the budget, to the Measure S funding takeaway, and how many people we would be adding to the program?
Any discussion on extending the existing 1,000 households on the program beyond the two years, or adding new people to a new program, would require discussion on where that funding would be coming from. It's not currently budgeted for that.
Okay. Well, I, I'm actually, for extending the program, I have a couple of concerns. First of all, I think we should ask them if they have taken advantage of any of the funding programs from the state. I think that should be one of the questions, and if they have, then they should not be eligible. And I don't know if my colleagues agree or not, but.
I agree. I will agree.
I think they should be excluded. And then, the other thing, the other item or fact that kind of concerned me was the fact that we're helping the 75-year-olds that are on, and older, that are on social security, and they really haven't, haven't lost during this pandemic. They've been getting the same amount of money as always. So, that's a bit concerning to me as well, but I'm willing to overlook it. I would like to see us extend the program for those that are on it until they're finished, cycle them out, as Councilmember Najarian said, and then look at the, at those who have applied already, that were not chosen, that were the unlucky ones, let's say, that were not chosen, and look at them. But I don't know that I want to go to 1,000 more people, and I think that's for further discussion. Am I correct?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, is this Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Sorry. Okay, go ahead.
I came up with that, what I want to say is to extend those who are getting for another year only, to say that nothing has been changed for elderly, that's not correct. The food, everything went through the roof. The rents, now, after the coronavirus, the landlords, they raised the rent. Every day, I get lots of calls, their rent is increased. Of course, fortunately for the Glendaleans, the limit is 7%. But rent has been, is much more higher than before. The food and whatever they need is much more, more expensive than before. To say nothing has been changed for them, I think that's kind of unfair. I mean, so.
I understand, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Agajanian. And I'm not saying that, that we should discontinue there. I'm just saying that that was a, an issue that I hadn't thought about, and, you know, it's, it's something to think about. So, I guess we're, all of us, Mr. Zovak, for direction.
Madam Mayor.
We should extend the program?
Mayor Devine.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, can I, just one, one comment?
Is that Councilmember Brotman?
Yeah. Because I want to make sure we're on the same page. I'm hearing the word "extend," and then I'm hearing having the people cycle off. So, when I, when I use the word "extend," what I mean is, after they reach their two-year mark, we're continuing to give them the subsidy for another year. It doesn't mean we're letting them cycle off and then putting new people in. That's, that's what I meant. I think Councilmember Najarian, kind of, it sounded to me like he was not saying "extend." He was saying, well, cycle them off, but then, extend the program, but with a new population, I think. And I'm talking about extending it with the same population and adding, and I think that's what council, I'm seeing Councilmember Agajanian nod his head. So, there's some different, some different approaches, but I think we can, I'm sure we can get into the details when it comes back.
Correct, we can do a follow-up.
Mr. Zovak, is that something that we can hammer out, or is that something that you need to know right now?
No, there are, if this is the direction you go in, I think there are some options we can come back to you, that deals with the existing program and the existing applicants and/or new applicants to the existing program.
Okay.
And that's what I'm hearing, if there's consensus on that. And Madam Mayor, I just need to clarify one thing, and I'm not sure if you were referencing any future programs to prohibit people that have received COVID-19 federal or state rental assistance? I don't think you can go back to the applicants now on this program and moving forward, say, if you've received any rental assistance from a federal, state agency, you're not eligible? That wasn't part of the criteria initially set up in 2019.
Yeah. Thanks, Mr. Zovak. No, I meant for future applicants, if we get, if we take in more applicants, that that should be definitely on the criteria, the.
Mayor Devine, Mayor Devine, I do have a caller on this item.
Okay, let's hear it.
Herbert Milano, you have three minutes. Herbert, go ahead.
Thank you. Mayor Devine, membership of the Housing Authority. I say, listening to this program about this program, as you know, I have first-time experience in dealing with tenants who have had significant difficulties during the pandemic. So, I applaud you for all the efforts that you've been making to really looking out for the most fragile segment of our population. I just feel in shock, having been at the, at the Blue Ribbon Committee for pensions and seeing this amazing disparity in all of the protections that are being given, and the amounts of pension that are astronomical, to my point of view, and then looking at this amazing contrast with individuals who are barely making it in Glendale. And the thought came to me that maybe the city needs, the city council needs to go to a retreat to really look overall at a budget and not wait until April and May, where you have a very limited time to assess it. The need is great for many, many residents in Glendale, and then there's an excess that you guys need to take a look at, in my opinion. I'm glad that you're addressing this issue, but they are, they are interconnected. The amount of funds that the city has is typically limited, and oftentimes at risk based upon the capital investments and the risks that we have pending on that. And I don't seem to see a full, a wholesome picture of, a comprehensive picture of really how the city's funding is coming along in light of the needs that oftentimes happens when there is a major economic downturn. So, just food for thought. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. Appreciate that. Okay, so, Mr. Zovak, back to you. Do we have, do we, do we need a motion, or Mr. Garcia? So, we are in agreement, and Mr. Zovak, you have enough information to go ahead with the staff report to bring back the program and different alternatives?
Again, from what I have heard, I would be bringing back a report that looks at an extension of the existing program with the existing participants, and then a discussion of an extension of that program with some new number of participants, and a manner in which we could solicit these participants into the program, whether it's using the existing dating database we have, the existing apps that were picked in lottery, or some new application process for them.
And I hope that you will look at the alternative that if we, if we, instead of extending the existing participants, that you sunset them out and we take in new, new participants.
Would that be sunsetting out at the 24-month mark, or some mark a little further out, which would be extending the program?
Madam Mayor, I don't.
Yes, Councilmember Agajanian.
I don't want to get anybody out, because they already said all those who are participating now is basically over 75 and some disabled. So, I don't want to sunset those who are 75 and over, to tell them they are not going to receive this at this time. They are spending more than before. It's not that they, again, I want to mention this, that they are, there are more expenses now. And these are people we said basically are, they're 75 and over, isn't that right? Those recipients are 75 years old and over and disabled.
Not all of them. The priority applicants are 75 and older. There are a group of applicants, non-priority, that we are going through and enrolling in the program, that are not, there are 62 and older, but not necessarily 75.
No, but in the family, there is one person who's 75 and over, do you say this?
For a priority applicant, yes.
Priority.
No. I'm not talking about the newcomers. I'm talking about those who are getting it.
Correct. There's a large number of people on the program right now who come from the priority category, which is 75 and older, yes. But we have exhausted that priority category and have been qualifying non-priority people who are 62 and older and meet all the other criteria.
But how many people are those?
600, 630.
No, how many are 75? I'm sorry. 75 and over, how many people are 75 and over?
I'm sorry, say it again. 730.
The majority are 75 and over.
Then we exhausted that list, but there isn't anybody else.
No, I understand, but the majority are 75 and over. The recipients are 75 and over. So, if we cut them off, is these are people that now, or a little bit later, they're going to be 77 and 87, and it's not just all of them are 75 or we picked them. There were 80s and 79s and 87-years-old. I know a person I met that, he said 87-years-old to me.
Madam Mayor.
So, we want to cut them off, it's, I don't want.
Thank you. Mr. Kasakian, Councilmember?
So, I know that we have a long day ahead of us. We have a discussion following this one, so I want to make the most of our time here. When will the earliest recipient of these funds run the course of the full program?
March 2022.
March 2022. Just trying to figure out, I don't mean to kick this can down the road, but I do think that there is merits to Councilmember Najarian's comments about having this as a part of the budget discussion as well. I'm of the mindset that we allow this program to run its course, and then if we want to renew it, then we renew it new, and anyone who went through the process before, we retain their records and they can reapply. But I would like us to come to some sort of consensus so we can give staff direction.
Well, I think, thank you, Mr. Kasakian. I think, Peter, what I'm thinking is, you know, and Mr. Agajanian as well, and I agree with Mr. Councilmember Kasakian, we want to, I guess I'm on the same ilk as Mr. Milano. I think we have to be fiscally responsible with the programs that we're, we're carrying out, and so, Mr. Zovak, do you have enough information now to bring this back?
I think we have enough information to bring back a number of different ideas on this, following this avenue of discussion.
If I could, Madam Mayor.
We don't, we don't all agree, but we do somewhat agree. Okay. Mr. Lansapin?
Madam Mayor, if I could, just quickly summarize, we would bring back what I think could be three options. One, to continue the current recipients and to look at another, expanding to another set of potential recipients. That could be new applicants or the applicants that weren't selected. We could have a second option that lets, lets the current applicants, I'm sorry, current recipients run their two-year course, and we could expand the program by looking at those that weren't selected, that 1,000 or so, and qualify them for a program. Then I think the third would be to sunset the program as originally intended. We'll hang on to information, and then the council can look at this at budget time again if they want to reignite the program. I think that first recipient might go March to July without any additional benefit, but if you choose at budget time, we could go back and, and restart those benefits for that, those original 1,000 for another year, or whatever you choose. Does that sound like the three options that you would want to look at? And we could bring that back to you.
Mr. Lansapin, I think you just wrote the staff report, yes.
Very good.
Can we get a motion on that?
I'll move, I'll move that set of direction.
That was moved by Councilmember Brotman.
Seconded by Councilmember Agajanian.
Roll call.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes. Okay, what's next, please?
Move to adjourn.
For council?
Council.
Second.
A second?
Do we have a motion for Housing Authority to adjourn?
Move to adjourn for housing?
Second.
Second?
Thank you.
We, we are adjourned at 3:17.